Yes.
Exactly.
All right, well, good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming. We're gonna go ahead and start our council work session. We've got one discussion item that is going to be the review of the governing body rules of procedure. Jeannie, I believe, has got a presentation for us. After, now, I'm gonna ask everyone, Jeannie's gonna run through the presentation. We're going to open the floor for public comments, and then we'll come back and discuss, like we do on regular new business items. Okay? So with that, Jeannie?
All right.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. At the April 20th City Council meeting, the governing body directed staff to schedule a work session to review suggested revisions to the governing body rules of procedure. The governing body was asked to submit suggested revisions to the city clerk, and as such, staff has prepared a review of those suggestions. Starting with Chapter One, it's the authority of the rules, and no changes were recommended to this chapter. Chapter Two deals with the council organization and duties. In this chapter, the revisions were focused on the appointments to boards and commissions, specifically the power to appoint, the appointment process, attendance, and reappointment, and I'll go over each of the revisions suggested. Under power to appoint, currently, the mayor is charged with recommending individuals to serve on boards and commissions. It was suggested to change this to the mayor and two council members are charged with recommending. It would still come before the governing body for approval. Under the appointment process, it currently states appointments are based on applications filed in the city clerk's office. It was suggested to clarify this with stating that they're based on recommendation by the mayor, followed by a majority vote by the council, and then consideration is based upon the application, feeding base of qualifications, and the interview results. Another item on the appointment process is currently applications are given to the interviewing team for review, and they're not an open record until they come before the governing body as a recommendation for appointment, and that list of applicants is given to the governing body. It was suggested that it be changed to the applications are given to the entire governing body for review and are an open record at that time. Currently, there's one week for review of applicants by the council. It was suggested to change this to three weeks. And it, as part of the appointment process, it states the city council will consider the appointment at their first regular meeting. It was suggested to add language to the section that the appointment of the nominee will be made by majority vote, and then if rejected, the mayor has one week to select another nominee. The city council shall consider appointment of replacement nominee at the next regularly scheduled council meeting. So again, just adding some clarifying language here. In regards to the interview committee, a couple suggestions were made. Currently, it's the mayor, the council rep, the city administrator, and then a board or commission representative that serves as the interview committee. It was suggested to change it to the mayor, no more than two council reps and the board or commission reps, eliminating the city administrator as part of the committee, or change it to a mayor and two council members only, or just convene a special meeting of the entire governing body. Currently, there's a section in the appointment process that deals with the attendance of the boards and commission members and the policy regarding that. It was suggested to add language to this section addressing how the attendance is recorded and reporting violation of the attendance policy, that it would be reported to the mayor and the city clerk, and that that would be addressed by the department director or staff that's supporting that board or commission. There's also language in the appointment process about reappointment, and that it's limited to an eight-year limit for board and commission members, except under exceptional circumstances. It was suggested to change this, the eight years, to at least 75 percent of two consecutive terms, and remove the ability to reappoint under exceptional circumstances. Another suggestion was to remove the term limit entirely. So there's a couple of items to choose from there. Chapter Three talks about conduct of the governing body, and there were suggested revisions to these sections regarding conduct of the city administrator and staff. Currently, part of that section states that the governing body member shall request information or research from the city administrator for response, and it was suggested to remove this item. Also, under this section, regarding city council agenda items, it says that requests answers to questions on these items should be from the city administrator, and it was suggested to add that the questions and responses should be copied to all council members. Chapter Four deals with the city council meetings and schedules, and no changes were recommended in this chapter. And then Chapter Five deals with meeting guidelines and procedures. There were several changes suggested in regards to Section A, Section B, and Section D. Under Section A, under action, there are some suggestions regarding roll call votes. The first one was that a roll call be taken on every vote. Currently, roll calls are taken on ordinances and resolutions. And then also having the city clerk call the roll on all votes according to a predetermined sequentially rotating order. And then under the city clerk's duties, adding that the city clerk calls the roll of votes. Under department directors and staff, it currently states that the governing body shall speak to the city administrator directly on issues and concerns. The city administrator will then forward this information on to the appropriate city staff member for disposition. One of the suggestions was to change it to at no time shall any member of the governing body order a staff member to not talk to another member of the governing body, or just remove this item entirely. Under requirements for agenda items commissioned, currently, it states that items may be submitted by written request to the city administrator. It was suggested to add that they can also be submitted to the mayor. And then under public comment, currently, it states that time shall be set aside at every regular meeting to allow the public to address the city council, and it was suggested to add that that would happen at every work session as well. Under agenda format, this suggestion comes from staff. It currently outlines the format of the agenda. It was suggested that we allow the mayor to reorder the agenda items as may be necessary to expedite the agenda or for the benefit of the public, and then add the following sections to the agenda: public hearings, old business, committee recommendations, and executive session. There were a couple of other suggestions. One was to create an accessibility advisory board for the purpose of advising the governing body on ADA compliance issues. Boards and commissions currently are established by ordinance and incorporated into the municipal code, so this isn't actually a rules of procedure revision, but can be discussed. And then add a section to state that the governing body will make time available for public comment after each presentation or work session. That was previously suggested to add to one section of the agenda format, but there was also a suggestion to add a completely different section that addresses those. Those were the substantive changes that were suggested and that need to be discussed tonight, and staff is seeking direction on which changes to make.
Thank you, Jeannie. Well, we're gonna open the floor for public comments at this time. If you're going to make public comments, I don't think you need to state your address for the record because we're not taking minutes. But, you know, please state your name if you've got any public comments that you'd like to make on the work session discussion item.
Good evening. My name is Debbie Hickman. What I'd like to first talk about is the appointment process. I do like the recommendation for it to be the mayor and to, from the governing body. I can hold those people responsible as a citizen. I have a way to hold them accountable, even if it's only at the next election. So for me, I can't hold people that are not in elected position any level of responsibility for their input into an appointment, the actual appointment process, and at the end, the actual approval for that appointment. So that, my point is, is I can hold elected officials accountable. I like that. The next would be about the applications. If the applications are considered legally open records now, because I know they have been sought out by other individuals at other times, is it right that we are allowed to regulate what is an open record by saying that the applications are not considered open records? To me, if legally it's an open record, I don't know how we can regulate that. Maybe I just don't have all the ins and outs on that, but that would be a question I have. The other would be, I like the idea at work sessions to be able to make comments at the beginning and at the end, because there sometimes discussion happens and information comes out, and you all ask things, stuff is handed out that might spur something on to me to ask another question or to make another comment. So those are the sections that I really, really, really like. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Anyone else coming forward? With no one else coming forward, if we wanted to move back to the first page of the council discussion forum and start there, questions or comments or questions for Jeannie, other staff members, other members of the governing body? Is there anyone that's got anything that they'd like to add?
Just a point of order here, Mr. Mayor. Are we talking about doing this in a sequential order by the sheet?
Yes.
We're gonna take each section. Do we have a time limit that we want to stick to, or?
Well-
We understand we only have 50 minutes here to go through a lot of items.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Can I just say that I support this one?
I do as well.
Okay.
I've got no problem with it. Mayor and two, mayor and two council members.
Well, here's the question I've got. And just a clarification more than anything else. Are we saying that the mayor and the council members are charged with recommending the individual or charged with interviewing the individuals? Recommending, it holds a different meaning because that means that the mayor and the council members have to be in consensus at the time of the interview in order to be able to recommend that individual. Is that what, is that what the intent is on this?
I think so. That's the way I read it.
Are we talking about consensus meaning majority, or are we talking consensus meaning unanimity of thought?
Yeah, because here's, here's what I'm thinking. And you don't get me, don't get me wrong on this. Let's say that there are several candidates that are in the process of being interviewed. We have one individual that needs to be selected. There's a possibility with this particular section that two council members could agree on a candidate, but the mayor could be opposed. Are we saying at that point, and I'm just asking for clarification here, are we saying at that point that the mayor gets overruled on a recommendation for a board or commission, and that person comes forward to the dais for approval by the body?
That's the way I read it. I mean, I, I mean, that's-
Okay, all right, because this is the very, this is the same thing that a previous council tried in 2009. Is that what we're, what we're shooting for here?
Yeah, I think it should be unanimous amongst the three. I mean, I think you, you kinda get, I don't know, divisive there. I think it should be three should come to unanimous decision to bring to the council.
I mean, personally, I think it should be like a jury. If that's the case, if we're gonna have all three recommend, I think that all three should be in consensus. I mean, like, all three should be, you know, bringing forth the same candidate. Because here's, here's the concern I've got. And, and I understand, you can have two. It could be like a hung jury thing, but at that point, you just go and open it up again. I don't know.
That was my next question for you.
But, but I'm, but I'm saying, you know, if, if you have a situation where you have two council members overruling the rec, overruling a mayor's preference, then you're gonna have serious division at the dais when it comes to the vote. And I don't want to, and I'm not, I'm not saying that that's necessarily, I mean, if we bring, if there's someone who's just clearly not qualified, then that's something else entirely. But I've, I've just got a real concern about the fact that we wanna, we want to, you know, move forward in, in talking to the community that, you know, we have a unanimity of thought and purpose when it comes to boards and commissions.
I, I mean, from my perspective, we've never, I mean, to my knowledge, I can say what I've been involved in, the things that have been brought forward. We, I actually requested the appointments over the last couple of years, and we had a pretty diverse representation of council members. Everybody had participated in some, some more than others. And at least to my knowledge, when we've come forward with one council member, we haven't had those issues. I mean, it seems that there's been agreement, consensus, what have you. So to me, adding one council member to the mix, I mean, you may have more discussion, you may have more variety of opinions, but I just don't see it as being a, a, and I'm saying, I mean, if somebody is on the interview and, hey, they flat out don't agree, then you say, I don't agree. I mean, I-
Yeah. I think there's ways you can do it without, without making it a majority vote where we have a situation where we have two council members overruling a mayor.
Do tell.
I mean, I, I just, I just, I just think that there's, there's ways to manage that process without, and I'm talking about like unanimous consent. Unanimous, if all three would be, you know, comfortable with a, with a, with an appointee, then that individual could be brought forward. I just don't think that we wanna have two council members with an agenda going after one candidate, because I understand this, the council may be different someday. And they, they may use that, you know, in another way that we don't agree with, okay? So, you know, I've always felt, you know, you never give your friends tools that you don't want your enemy to have. And I'm, and I'm not saying we're friends or enemies at the dais, but what I'm saying is that, you know, we gotta be very careful when we talk about this kind of stuff, and be very careful when we're discussing the impact of that.
And actually, I, I did a little bit of my own unofficial survey. There's, since we instituted these rules back in 2013, there's been 31 appointments made. And 26 of those were approved by five zero votes. That's 84 percent. There was only three four one votes. In that case, there was one council member that made each of the no votes on, on each of the council members.
I think we know that guy.
And that's, that's 10 percent. And then, and then the last time that we were doing a, a vote for the planning commission appointments at the last meeting, that, that ended up in a three two vote, which is by two members, and that's 6 percent. It just seems to me that, that this is, there hasn't been a lot of issues with how this appointment process has worked. And it's wildly different than it was, let's say, back in 2009, that Steve referenced, when, you know, the mayor could choose whatever process he wanted, didn't have to include any council members, didn't have to, didn't have to interview people, didn't have to solicit applications. I mean, now we solicit applications, and everybody knows who's getting appointed and, who's, who's put in for the appointment, and people get interviewed not just by the mayor, but by the, by a member of the council, and now, at the request of some of the people that serve on the boards and commissions, we've got a board and commission member in there as well. The city administrator has traditionally sat in on this, but honestly, I don't recall her ever voting. I think I've mentioned this before.
And she takes a couple of notes.
She, she does, and she, she takes great notes. And I wish I took, I wish I had such skills. Like, maybe I would've been a better student. But, but yeah, this, this seems like, and I, I looked around also. I, I don't see anybody else that actually even does it the way that we do now.
No, we, no, there isn't.
Much less taking the extra step that is, that is being suggested. And, and I don't know, I, I couldn't find anywhere where, where this would be considered a best practice of a, of a governing body any.
So, so I mean, is, is the consensus that it's the mayor, two people, and they bring forth a candidate that they-
By unanimous consent.
Right.
I mean, that's what I-
I'm okay with however they, they arrive at a candidate, whether it's unanimous consent or whatever. I'm not in the least bit bothered or otherwise worried about a split decision for an appointment. What I am bothered by is that, is that you, in the previous, or in the existing process, I was asked, pretty much in the blind, for a recommendation. There were people that, you know, a couple of them I knew, a couple of them I don't know. One I'm only familiar with because he served on the council. I didn't have any, any good other background or qualifications to go by or anything. And then, and then, of course, I'm supposed to vote for that at the end of it. It didn't make any sense to me. I don't have any, nothing to work with here. I like to have things to work with in order to make an informed decision or vote.
But that's in the appointment process, that's in this, that's in Section H. I, I just wanna see if we can come to consensus on Section H, paragraph two, which is the very first one on the first page.
I think it should be unanimous, but, and I'm okay with the two council members.
So am I.
Logistically, how do you appoint the two council members? Is that just by?
We've always volunteered, I mean, we've always-
Mayor's always asked for volunteers, okay, yeah.
Uh, some, and to be honest, some people have volunteered even before we got into a meeting. I mean, I knew I had a volunteer when I, when I sat down at a particular meeting. So, and we did, that was, that was the other thing. We, you know, we had 15 different interview sessions. Councilperson Roberts and Councilman Schut both sat in on five different interview sessions. Councilman Freeman and Councilman, Councilman Fotovich both sat in on one, and then Councilperson Harrison sat in on three. And honestly, I, I insisted almost that I get Larry to come sit in on a, an interview, and I insisted that we get him to come sit in on an interview because I didn't want it to be the same people every single time. And, and from that, I mean, we've had, you know, 94 percent near unanimity of thought. This, I, and I don't have a problem with, you know, if, if the, if the compromise position is a mayor and two council members unanimous decision, I'm okay with that. If it's not unanimous decision, then it reminds me of what we went through in 2009. Just a way to, to cut the mayor out of the process. And, you know, I remember sitting out in the audience and, and listening to Mayor Gervetta say, is it that you think that the mayor has too much power, or do you think that this mayor has too much power? And, and, you know, that's my question to you. I, I don't, this is, this is, with all the other cities that I've looked at, I mean, the mayor appoints, the council approves, nobody else is even doing it the way we are now.
I think that, I think the unanimous consent provision strikes a good balance. It, it, that means the mayor may not get their, his number one pick, but neither does the, do the other two council members either. They would have to settle on a, on a, on a, on a member to bring forward to the, to the dais that all can agree on, and it would make the process probably even more smooth than it already is. I mean, personally, I think that's, that's a workable compromise, and I think we're pretty much done discussing this one.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that.
I'm, I'm agreeable with that.
Okay.
Lee?
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. There we go. Okay, so appointments to boards and commissions.
Applications.
Yeah, the, the applications. You know, the reason, and this was something, you know, Jeannie, how long you been with us now?
Since July.
Since July last year. And last, last fall, somebody had asked for, made an open records request asking for copies of the application. And Jeannie, being well-qualified and certified city clerk, went looking to see if that was okay, and she was the one that found attorney general opinion, I believe, that, that these are not necessarily open records. So that's why, you know, I, I would like to, you know, if we've got a, if we've got an AG opinion, I'm, I'm not sure how much further we need to go than that.
Can we, can we have it where the names and the information, I mean, is blocked out? I, I wanna see the applications so I can make sure that I'm recommending that this person, that's what this is for, correct? I mean, but somehow, we've gotta be able to look at those and say, look, this is the person one, two, or three, based on just some generic reference, to say, this is the most qualified person I'd like to see in that position.
Can, is there a way for us to, when somebody applies? I mean, because really, in my opinion, this is for the protection of the person applying.
Sure.
For, for whatever reason.
Mm-hmm.
But can we set up something when they apply that says, hey, this, this application is going to be an open record? Do you have an issue with this? If they say no, then, you know, whatever. But if, I mean, why, why not get, because, I, I mean, this is one thing that I did solicit some feedback for the people that have applied. No one I came across had an issue with our application being made publicly. So I don't, I mean, is there something that we can control about that?
Well, I, and I wonder if there's, I wonder if there's, if we can just include language in that says that the application is, will be considered an open record, and is that going to, yeah, if they, if they fill out the application, then they're agreeing to it.
Absolutely. So if terms and conditions or some sort of disclaimer are sponsoring, I, I understand this is open record and, I mean, and that way, we would be able to have access to those applications before the interview process. I think that's important.
Sure.
If we're asking for recommendations or a cursory understanding of, of, you know, the applicants.
Okay. Where are we on that?
I'm fine if we, you put some language in so I can, yeah, I mean, that seems to solve the problem.
As long as it solves the problem, I'm good with it.
Right.
Okay.
I'm okay with that, yeah.
Okay. All right. There was another piece in here, wanted to change the language, appointments are based on recommendations by the mayor, followed by majority vote. I think what we've decided on already is that the recommendations will be made by-
Mayor and two council-
Mayor and two council members, unanimous opinion.
Yes.
So you understand where we're going with that, Jeannie? Okay, I know you do. So now that we're having the, the applications, do we still, I, this was something that I wanted to add because oftentimes, Lee, you filled out one of these applications before. They're not tremendously in-depth.
They're not invasive.
You know, they don't, they don't actually provide a whole lot of great information, but, you know, sometimes one of them's a whole lot better than the others, even just in their approach to their application. But, you know, there are people that, you know, each of us might personally know, know them better than the other people, and might have issues or be willing to recommend that person. I think that still needs to be part of the process, and I'd kinda like to see the language adopted.
I have no issue with recommendations if, one, we're able to see the applications before the interview process, and, two, that they're not binding. So, you know, these are, this basically is, you're soliciting feedback, basically. You're not, you're not looking for, okay, we're gonna take a majority vote of the council members beforehand to see who we're going to interview. If that's, if that's the case, if, if, you know, if we're gonna be determining who's going to be interviewed based on recommendation, that's wrong. But if we're interviewing all the candidates, it's fine. I have no problem with, with soliciting feedback.
Okay.
Agreed. I'm on, on board with that.
You know, there's, there's been a time or two where we've shortlisted candidates because we had such a big turnout for one or two positions, like eight people applying, something like that. I don't know that the way that we're heading towards is going to allow for us to, to do that in the future. And, you know, these things go pretty fast, but they're hard to, they're hard to schedule. And that was something that I hadn't thought about when I was submitting some of my own recommendations for this. You know, and that was something where- You know, and that was something where the interview committee did the shortlisting.
I guess the question is, do we want to give every applicant fair and equal consideration for the position? Or do we want to, you know, take it upon ourselves before having a chance to? I mean, I, you're talking about a screening, some sort of screening interview that would happen before it would come to us.
Uh, well, not even a, a screening interview. In, in some cases, we had a, a whole bunch of people apply one time. And, and honestly, we went through and looked at some of the applications, and some of the people filled them out in such a cursory manner that it didn't appear that they actually were really serious about the position that they were applying for. And, and it, it, it was such a stark contrast to, to some of the other applications that those people were removed out of the process.
I guess since we're going to be able to see all the applications now, as a group, we'll be able to decide if those folks are worthy of coming forward.
Well, I think it still falls on the interview committee.
Right.
Because that's probably going to happen between, you know, we're probably not going to come back to the council and say, well, we're eliminating, you know, two, three, four people off of the.
There's a coma issue there, I think, too.
Yeah.
So, you're saying the interview committee would designate?
Would make a determination about whether or not we would shortlist.
Yeah.
Well, I thought what we ought to do then is we ought to make it a, make it a formulaic process. So, if we're going, if we're going to shortlist, if we've got, you know, ten applicants for, for one position, for example, what we would say in the rules of procedure is, all right, you know, if we have an excessive number of applicants for a position, which doesn't happen very often, maybe once or twice in an entire term, okay? You would say, we will cut off, we will cut off the, the interview pool at five. Say, no more than five candidates will be interviewed for a position. And say, anybody over that will have to be screened.
I personally think you should interview everybody.
I mean, I'm, I'm just saying, there's a, yeah.
If you're going to pare it down, I, I mean, these are people who live in this community who are expressing interest to participate in something. We have diverse backgrounds, qualifications, and if you're going to pare it down, you're literally going to be paring it down based on what you think the candidate's qualifications are. And, in my opinion, that's wrong. I, I think that if, if we're going to interview, then, and, and if we're, if we as council members want to be included in that, then we should make the time and we should interview everybody fairly.
You know, the scheduling thing, that, that, you make a very good point. We shouldn't be excluding people based on the availability of our schedules.
Right, I mean.
I mean, they, they're taking the time to, to put in an application, you know, regardless of how they fill it out, they fill it out.
Okay. Well, I'm fine with that, as, you know, everybody else is keeping that the same. Well, the interviews don't take a long time, but Debbie.
It seems to me like this is not something that needs to be documented. I mean, it sounds like we're, we're really getting into the minutia here of what the panel of three are going to do amongst themselves. I mean, panel of three are going to figure out who we want to, just handle it.
Yeah. Well, you know, there's been thirty-one appointments, but there's, there's probably been more like seventy or eighty interviews that have been conducted. And, and I can appreciate, and I was glad to have so many different council members participate in those interviews. But I had to participate in all of them.
Hey, you signed up for that job.
Yes, I did, but, and, and no, I don't. But that's, I'm, I'm fine with what, with keeping that the same, which is basically implied in what Christie suggested.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, this is, this is another situation where there isn't a lot of circumstances where, where we have, like, an excessive number of applicants. Typically, what happens is we have too few applicants. But, I mean, I, I mean, we haven't talked about this, but I think that if, if there's only one applicant for a position, you know, and the, and the time limit has expired, I think that personally, I, I think that's a problem. I think if we only have one applicant that's, 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 that's coming out for Board of Commission, they get in by default, they may not be a very good candidate, you know? I mean, personally, I think that if too few applicants apply, that's a bigger problem than if too many applicants apply.
Okay.
And that's, and that may need to be addressed more than anything else. Because you don't want the only person applying.
It's happened.
And I know it's happened. It's happened more, much more often than too many applicants apply.
Yep.
So, I would almost say we would need to.
We got really lucky with Clint Barney, though.
Yeah.
We did.
I agree with that.
No, but I'm, I'm saying, I'm saying, any, in any circumstances, you have too, too few people applying, the, the chances you have a quality applicant go down, not up.
Okay.
So.
All right. Interview committee, mayor, now we're talking about two council representatives. And currently, it's been city administrator and a board of commission representative. I'm for keeping the board or board and, or commission representative. And, you know, I don't think it needs to be the city administrator, but boy, we ought to have somebody that, that she designates to come and sit and actually take the notes. And it doesn't have to be Cheryl. I mean, if it's utility advisory commission, it could be Gonzalo Garcia, joining us for the first time this evening. Good evening, sir.
Yes.
If it's, you know, planning commission, then.
I, I frankly don't understand the need for note-taking, the third-party note-taking. I, I mean, I, I hire people all the time by myself. And nobody taking notes, I take my own notes.
I, I understand that, Lee. I, I have hired many people. I, I was in the temporary employment business for twenty-plus years, hired thousands of people, actually. But what you get when you have the city administrator there, or you have a department director there, or somebody that they designate, is somebody that understands the inner workings of that department in a way that, I mean, hey, maybe you're going to understand UAC, but we don't have anybody else here that's served on the planning commission. And my intention is, actually, to hopefully institute a few more committees or boards. And, and I think you need some expertise, some native knowledge from the, the people that do the work all the time. Steve?
I, yeah, I, I would be able to talk this way. I want other people to weigh in on this, too, so I'll make it short. I have no problem with city administrator or designee, a member of the board of commission in that room, as long as they don't have a vote. If the city, if the, if the mayor and the two council members in that room are the only ones voting, all right, and they're only, they're the only ones coming to the consensus, I, I won't mind having those people in the room because they do bring a different perspective and they might be able to weigh in with information, okay, that might aid the mayor and the two council members in their decision. But I don't want them to have a vote because, as, as Debbie pointed out earlier, they're not accountable to the citizens, okay? The, the, you know, the planning commission representative and the, and the city administrator are not accountable to, to, to the citizens. They're accountable to us, but we, it, it's a third-party accountability. And I don't think that that's, that that's, you know, productive. But having them in the room, I don't have a problem with that as long as they're just observing or providing some, some information.
I don't have a, a serious problem with it as long as they're not, as long as they're not required members. And, and, of course, as long as they're not going to have a, you know, any sort of input into the decision-making. But making them required to be there just creates a scheduling problem that, for, for really, you know, a nominal value add, in my opinion.
I think it's not necessary to have them there. I mean, Cheryl's a busy lady. She's got a lot of stuff to do with economic development. Having her stop to go and sit down and have these interviews, to me, it's a waste of her time. Having somebody take notes for her, it's a waste of time when I think the folks can, we can figure it out, whoever the three people are in there, mayor and two council people.
Honestly, I'm fine with them being there. I, the three interviews that I sat in, I actually went back through some notes, and there were some specific questions that some candidates had that Cheryl was able to answer, that nobody else was able to in that room, from a context perspective. So, I, I think that she provided some, some insight into some questions regarding some roles and some things that were going on that were beneficial, so.
Yeah, but I don't, but I, but I, and, and at the same time, I don't know if it's necessarily required.
No, I.
I, I think, I think that it's, that they, maybe the, the, you know, the city administrator shall, you know, shall appoint, or may attend, might make more sense. But.
I'm okay with everything. I, I agree, you know, it, it probably doesn't need to be written as required, just for scheduling and everything else. But I, I think it's a good idea to have them there. But written down in the governing body rules of procedure, I don't know if it needs to be required.
What about the board or commission representative? Because I, I tell you, this was something we ju- just adopted in January at the request of people that serve on the boards and commissions. And, you know, I think that passed unanimously.
I, I think they can be consulted.
Yeah, but.
But, ha, ma, having a requirement that makes them be present for the selection process, I think is, you know, not to, not, not necessary. It, I think it's good, you know, like, like Todd said, I, I think it's not a bad idea to have them there. It's probably, there's probably some value there, but I think it's nominal. And at the end of the day, I'm, you know, as a, as a guy that's going to have to vote for the person that, that's brought forward, I feel comfortable with a mayor and two council members and their unanimous decision being brought forward. And I honestly don't care who else was in, you know, in the room when it happened. But I don't want, I don't want to make a requirement.
Instead of a requirement, though, they're, they're maybe make it a, they're allowed? Or, in other words, if that board or that commission would like to have a representative there, they could be notified and they can attend as many of those interviews as they want to.
Yeah.
But not necessarily required.
Cheryl, do you think we could wordsmith this?
Yes.
She's sitting next to a lawyer.
Listen, we want to be able, we want to be able to understand this. Ooh, just kidding, right? Just kidding.
Okay. So, we're done with that?
Yeah, thanks. All right, so, interview committee, city council will consider the appointment at their first regular meeting. I, I, let's see. I think what we've decided on, I, I don't think we need to get to the next step. Is that correct?
You're talking about rejection of the nominee by the council?
Yeah.
I think that you'll have a much lower chance of that if you have unanimous consent coming out of that interview process.
Well, I think we, there's almost, every thirty-one have all been approved.
Sure.
And, and ninety-four percent of them with little or no opposition.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's necessary.
Okay, so we can move on to attendance?
Yeah.
There's just nothing in there that talks about attendance, and yet there's a, a policy in place that says what the attendance policy is. This was something that I wanted to see added. There's a department director that's in charge of each of these committees or commissions or boards. So, whoever is taking minutes from those meetings, they should just be keeping track of the attendance as well.
Fine with that.
And just wanting to be able to have a reported message.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Term limits. The suggestions are either remove the term limit requirement or keep it and remove the ability to reappoint under exceptional circumstances or change, well, and then change it years to seventy-five percent of two consecutive terms. I'm just going to say, you know, I, I, I was on the fence about this when we passed the rules of procedure in two thousand thirteen. I'm actually in favor of removing the term limit.
I have a question. How many people do we have nearing an eight-year term limit and, you know?
Well, and some of them, like the airport board and BGA, where you don't get a lot of applicants.
Right.
That would be, I mean.
I didn't know how many we had.
Yeah, that's, when we made the last round, last round, last two rounds of airport board appointments, first time around, we had four open seats and only two people applied. I asked Walter to apply, and he did, but then he removed his name. But, uh, I, we only had two people apply. They're the people that were on the board and they'd been there for ten years or more, anyway. They ended up getting approved unanimously, and then we, we ended up having to go back out for a couple more.
Don't we have one that's been on there since seventy-nine?
Yes.
I was nine years old when that.
I'm a favorite for putting it. I, I mean.
I mean, here's, here, the only time when, when we've had to deal with a term limit question is when we've had, and again, it comes back to too few appoint, too, too few applicants for positions that have been, you know, that have been just there for a long time. And, you know, we would, I don't think we would have as big of a term limit issue if we fixed the issue with too few applicants, you know, running for, for positions. Now, does that mean we leave positions open for months? Well, I mean, personally, I've seen boards of commissions work with, with one member in absentia, you know, for periods of time. I think it's better that we get the right person rather than get the first person. I mean, personally, that's just, that's just my own personal opinion, but, I mean, I, the term limit, the, the term limit situation, I think, and you can back me up on this, I think, is only will come into play in those circumstances.
Uh, you know, when we, the first round of planning commission appointments, it came into play.
Yes.
After that, it hasn't, and the only time it's come up in the past is after that was airport board.
BGA.
But with the airport board, I mean, we're, we're trying to give preference to people that live in Gardner first, and several of the appointees since have been airport, have been Gardner residents. So, I, I just, I'd like to see it removed. That's me, I think Todd said. Is that the way you're going?
Yeah, I, I, I think that if we fix the issue of too few appointees, we, we don't need the term limit requirement.
Lee, how do you feel?
Uh, well, my concern with these appointments has always been, I'd like to see a lot of turnover. I mean, I'd like to see a lot of different people.
More citizens involved.
More citizens involved. I, I see that as a path for bringing people from, from the audience here up to here, to take our spots. And I, I see more, more turnover being a positive thing in that, in that regard. And I kind of, I, I'm the one that came up with the seventy-five percent of two terms.
I think I understand that.
It was just a, a way of, of saying not, you know, not doing it in calendar years, but in terms of terms, if you've served more, most of one term, and then you've been reappointed for a second term, I think, okay, you've done your time. You know, choose another committee or, or, or run for election.
Christie, how do you feel?
I guess my, my only concern is without term, I mean, I get that we have some boards where you get no applications. So, I mean, I, I'm kind of opposite Steve. I do believe that if you have qualified people who have sat on that board, having people there, even though they've been there a long time, is better than having nobody. However, I also believe that people that are on these floors for six, seven, eight years naturally should boil to the top when they're interviewing because they've got much more experience. And so, you, if you remove the term limits, you could potentially keep reappointing the same people and overlooking just getting new people in.
I think it's our job as a governing body to find people to fill those spots, recommend people to get in there and go, hey, I need you, Gardner needs you, to come in here and apply for this because we need help. And I think if governing bodies in the past haven't been doing that, maybe that's why we don't have enough people doing it. And you've got a point there. I think that it's incumbent upon us as members of the governing body who are relying on these boards and commissions to be our eyes and ears, to talk to people and get them to apply. I mean.
But then you look at, like, the airport board, and I mean, who are those people? They're people that have airplanes, fly, and live in Gardner. I mean, it's not like there's a huge pool of candidates, something like that, and experience and, and knowledge, I think, is good on that. I mean, they're forcing someone off, but.
I will say, I think we, we've got three Gardner residents on the board now, and before, I think we only had one.
One, yeah.
Uh, you, you know, there's no to, term limits for elected office in Gardner. And, and I know that in other cities, there's people that'll get on a planning commission and stay for a long time. Somebody just left the planning commission in Lenexa, and he'd been on there for thirty-two years. And maybe that seems a little long, but it's. And maybe that seems a little long, but at the same time, Lenexa's really cooking with gas right now when it comes to economic development.
Well, there's something to be said about continuity. At the same time, you know, if you're, if you're going in the wrong direction, you don't want that continuity either. I mean, and that's, that's the, you know, that's the guilt-add sword of continuity.
Well, and then, you know, their performance on the Planning Commission, but, I, I'm, you know, I'm either leaning towards removing the term limits or, or keeping it the way that it is, which is, are not typically eligible for reappointment after serving eight years, except under exceptional circumstances. I'm not sure that there's anything wrong with that.
Yeah, I'm kind of in that, that same.
Anyone else?
Well, that's a person who was also in favor of removing the term limit requirement. I have to say, I'm still in favor of it, because of the fact that we have situations where, you know, we have people that just, we have nobody but the current incumbent applying. And until that changes, I think it's, it's actually creating a problem for us if we don't have the term limit, if we do have the term limit requirement.
But then, but can that be an exceptional circumstance that you override?
Yeah.
If we wish to do that.
Yeah, I, I kind of like to see leaving it the same.
I'm okay with that.
All right, I mean, I've got that, as long as we.
It's really, it's, yeah, it still gives the, the flexibility that if somebody's exceeded their, you know, their eight years, you know, and there's plenty of applicants, and they meet all the other requirements, the person that's exceeded the eight years is probably the person that's gonna go.
Yep.
That's the way it's worked in the past.
Okay, I'm fine with that, then. Let's keep it the way it is.
I'm all right with it.
All right.
Good. Conduct of the governing body with Administrator and staff. So, governing body members shall request information or research on a given topic from the City Administrator. Responses, responses will be copied to all council members. Request answers to, oh, that's a, that's a separate one. There's been a recommendation to remove that item.
So, request information or research, but please respond.
Basically, just like in that last sentence, right?
Actually, I think that the, the, the last sentence on each column is a different section, a different part.
Here's the question I've got about this, you know, I'm, I'm just taking this, again, this is clarification here. Does this mean that we would be directing city staff to engage in a project without the knowledge of the City Administrator? And, and the reason why I ask that question is because in our current structure, the City Administrator directs the, directs the activities of the Directors, and the Directors direct the activities of staff. If we're circumventing that process, what is the payoff? What's, what's the, I, I'm asking this of the person who asked for, you know, parts and rec revenue and expense information, and it took me six weeks to get it, and I got a summary as opposed to the details I was looking for. So, take that for what it's worth, but I, I need to know, who's the accountable, who's the accountable party, okay? And we're circumventing the chain of command on a, on a quest, on a question like this.
What?
Because if I ask, you know, Jason Bruce for information on, you know, soccer, you know, enrollment, things like that, okay? Or, or on, on, on parts and rec employee hours, okay? And the City Administrator and, and Jeff don't know about it, okay? And he comes back with information that's not correct, who's accountable?
Just clarified chain of command doesn't work from the top down. It's bottom up.
Correct.
So, it's worth the top, although I don't think it's right to go around the City Administrator on things. I just wanna clarify that.
Okay, I, I, again, that's, I'm asking for that because there could be the perception, okay, that we are going outside the, the, you know, the operational chain of command.
Can we just take a quick, you know, a quick consensus? I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of, of leaving it as is, but adding questions and responses copied to all council members.
Me too.
Personally, I agree.
Me too.
I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I just don't wanna be asking staff.
Be more moving it down the road.
All right, moving on.
Okay.
And yeah, that's, this is coming in real close to be wired here, but.
No, it's fine. We're good.
Chapter five, meeting guidelines and schedule. Actions shall be taken by means of ordinance resolution or oral motion and passed by a majority of the body. The recommendations are call roll for every vote of the governing body, or have the city clerk call the roll on all votes according to a predetermined sequentially rotating order. I actually like the second one, but I don't think it's required, I don't think it should be required on all votes. You know, one of the things that I learned by going to the Governing Body Institute was, hey, make sure you throw something in for abstentions. I, I was in the, in the office signing something, and I asked Jeannie, are you having any trouble tracking who's voting yes or no on these items? And, and she said no. So, you know, I'd, I'd like for this to be, you know, roll call, city clerk can call the roll on votes for ordinances and resolutions.
Okay, I'm all right with that, and I appreciate the fact you added the abstentions, because you didn't, I added this, call roll for everyone to go to the body because of the abstention question.
Sure.
I will say this, I think there needs to be some provision in here where if a council member wishes to call division, they can do so, and there would have to be a show of hands vote. It doesn't have to be a, you know, a, a, a formal roll, but I, in situations where you have ayes and nays, okay? And they, the nays may be louder, even though there's only two of them, I, I just wanna make sure that a, that a council, any council member can call division at that point and ask for a show of hands vote.
Okay, so.
I think chair would naturally.
Yeah, and yeah, no, if Rich said, can we see a show of hands, because he didn't hear what Christie voted?
Sure.
Then, then.
And that's, that's, that would, that would resolve that question.
Yes, yeah, anybody can say, can I see a show of hands?
Okay.
Okay. All right. And so adding call a roll for votes for ordinance and resolutions gets added by reference. So, chapter five, and we're not gonna get all the way through this, I don't think. Section A, Department Directors and Staff. Governing body shall speak to the City Administrator directly on issues and concerns. City Administrator will then forward this information onto the appropriate city staff member for disposition. The recommendations are to remove this item, and there's a second one that says at no time shall any member of the governing body order a staff member not to talk to another member of the governing body.
This is sort of redundant.
Same thing as the previous. Okay.
Yeah, keep it the way it is.
Okay, we will keep it the way it is. Requirements for agenda item submission. Council members may submit items for future agendas during council comments or council updates, or by written request to the City Administrator. May also, council, recommendation is council members may also submit a written request to the Mayor.
I'm good with that?
Good, I'm good with that.
I'm fine with that. I have one clarification question, and that is, currently, right now, a majority of council members are needed to, 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 you know, to, to have a agenda item on the agenda.
That's if we're doing, actually, a, a council member can petition at any time to get something on the agenda. It's.
It's for special, special meetings. I'm, I'm not the judge, but.
Well, no, yeah, what I'm saying is, is that, yeah, sometimes have a known consensus going in.
Yeah.
It adds.
Certainly.
And extra weight.
Okay.
So, are we talking about just adding?
Yeah.
City, City Administrator and the Mayor, or the City Administrator or the Mayor?
City Administrator or the Mayor.
Or the Mayor.
Yeah.
Okay. Next one, for public comments during work sessions. I'm, I'm good with the, the way that we run new business items.
Would it be possible, like Debbie mentioned, which I think's a great idea, for an after, you know, if somebody, because I, I know I've sat out there and had an, you know, discussions been going on up here, and I'm like, hey, I've got the answer, and yet I wasn't able to say anything until after the meeting, and things are going, things are rolling.
I, I, I understand where you're, I understand where you're going with that, but I, I can tell you, you know.
I know, nobody else.
The meetings, the meetings haven't been too terribly hard to keep control of, but I don't wanna get to a point where that's ever a problem. On top of that, people can email, people can call. When that, when the work session item gets to the council, there's going to be an opportunity for public comments after a presentation the next time around. And I'd really like to, to see it stay the same as new business items, but, and Rich, I, I can appreciate where you're coming from with that, but is there anybody else that is with Rich on that?
Well, I kind of suggested that when we first talked about this, having, you know, a brief five-minute period of public comment afterwards. If anybody chooses to exercise their right to use, use it, they can use it.
I think if we keep the, if we keep a time limit on that.
Yeah, five minutes.
It's not a big deal.
Yeah.
It's kinda like we get alerted down with public comments anyway.
Right.
No.
Yeah, well, that's.
Currently, but it can't, if we keep it.
Yeah, I, I'm looking out here this evening. We've, we've got a whole lot more people in the audience than we normally do, and you never know how these things are going to go.
We could.
And, and, and I, there's plenty of opportunity between a work session and a council meeting to touch base with your elected officials, and there's going to be another chance if it comes as a new business item.
But this is really a low-cost game. I mean.
And five minutes.
It doesn't even have to be fi- a set amount of time. The, the Mayor can set the time.
Yeah.
Thirty seconds. We got twenty people sitting there that wanna speak. You got, you got a minute, or whatever.
Sure.
It just, it just opens the, the floor back up and for that one, one person or two people that might have something else to say.
And the answer might be out there.
Or we have time, I mean, honestly, like, right now, we're behind, so.
Yeah, we won't have time.
Okay, we'll have time, so maybe it's after each new item, and then, you know what, if there's ten minutes left, and anybody, we say, hey, does anybody wanna come up? Not, if there isn't any time left, then.
I think, I like that.
I'm in.
Time permitting kind of concerns me, because usually the larger items are the ones that take more time, but we can, we can, we can talk.
Yeah, I.
Wordsmith it.
I.
Yep, right.
I, I sup- I suppose we could wordsmith it, but I, I can tell you that, you know, there's, there's plenty of opportunity for people to let their feelings be known to their elected officials. It doesn't necessarily have to be after, we've already, after they've had an opportunity and after we've already discussed it. It's, uh, it, it seems, you know, one step more that doesn't actually need to be taken.
Come on, Mr. Mayor, you're spending more time on it than the people out there are.
Well.
Okay, last.
I'm, I'm the one that's trying to keep order of the meetings. Thanks.
And the last one, I think, I don't see a problem with any of the. I think we already have provision to reorder our agenda items anyway.
Yeah.
It's just we're adding that to codifying it into the decision. Any, any council member can ask to reorder items, not just.
I, I'm okay with that.
I'm good.
All right.
Okay. I'm very tolerant to other people being late, but I hate being late myself.